Good morning. Welcome to the Tuesday, April 23 meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the role to establish quorum?
Good morning. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Desmond Frost?
Here.
Hume?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, April 26x 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seeing is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda, off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to the clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda, off-agenda item, and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of the public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you. Please call the first item.
First item is off-agenda public comments.
Do we have a public comment?
We do. We have one. Mr. Pete Spalding?
Welcome, sir. Okay. Chair Kennedy, Supervisors Desmond, Hume, Frost, and Serna, thanks again for two minutes of your time to speak about the Army Corps of Engineers contracts 3B and 4B. I want to thank Supervisors Desmond and Hume for helping to organize the April 8 community conversation with Congressman Ami Bera and the Corps. It was somewhat helpful. Almost 300 people participated, again showing how much the community cares about this issue. Once again, though, the Corps spent a lot of time talking and enough time listening to concerns. The moderator, Mr. Klein, admitted that there were more questions coming in than he could keep up with. Among myself and my American River Trees colleagues, we submitted over 21 questions in advance, and only one of those 21 questions was answered during the meeting. And while the Corps suggested that they were following engineering-with-nature principles, they're clearly missing the mark on this one. Quote, "Engage communities, stakeholders, partners, and multidisciplinary team members to develop innovative solutions." I hope you read the California forum in recent editions of the Sacramento Bee. It appeared three times, twice in digital versions and again in Sunday's edition. I want to quote from the middle of the article that was written by Tom Philp. "The Army's draft environmental document detailing these projects, while technically in English, satisfies narrow legal requirements but is far from digestible public information. The analysis," and this is a quote, "is organized and presented in such a way that it is nearly impossible for all but the most experienced reviewers to navigate and understand." And that was written by Sacramento County Parks Director Liz Bellis, who's calling for a stop to the proposed work east of Howe Avenue pending more review and public engagement. So I'm asking you to listen to your county parks director. As she pointed out, the Corps is not communicating. They've completed great projects for Sacramento, but if they'd communicate better and design with nature instead of trying to control her, we can have flood protection, erosion control, and a wild and scenic American river for generations to come. Thank you. Thanks for all you do for Sacramento County, and have a good meeting.
Thank you, sir, for coming down. Next item, please.
That concludes your public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Supervisor Desmond, I'm sorry.
So really quick, Pete, I just want to thank you for being here. I can't get into a back-and-forth with you, but I know I'm going to be responding to an email you recently sent. We've been having a lot of discussions, and I'll kind of get you up to speed on what we've been discussing, and you'll be a part of those discussions.
Thank you.
Moving on to consent matters, your items 2 through 39, and I do not have any announcements.
Are there any members of the Board, Supervisor Frost?
Thank you, Chair Kennedy. I wanted to call out a couple of items for comment. And number one, the first one is number three. I don't know if you want to read the item.
Okay. "Approve American Rescue Plan Act District Directed Funding allocations for District 4 in the amount of $2,145,000. Adopt resolutions authorizing agreements associated with the implementation of American Rescue Plan Act projects."
So today seems to be my day for ARPA allocations. And I know that Siobhan and Matt Loviski and many of the staff know how hard it's been for me to get, just to give money away sometimes is difficult because the ARPA dollars are have, you have to qualify for these dollars. And so I'm really proud today to be able to get more funding resources to not only our park districts, which, you know, we were able to give additional funding to North Highlands, Sunrise, Wreckin' Park, Orangevale, and the city of Folsom. Also, there were 20 businesses that will benefit. It was difficult with the businesses, too, to find businesses that actually qualified for the ARPA dollars. They had to show that they actually had losses due to COVID. And then the P bids, which, you know, the parks and the P bids were really impacted by COVID. The homeless situation was exacerbated, and their services were impacted. So I'm excited about that and just wanted to give a shout out that I'm proud to be able to be able to do that. I also wanted to call out number 17.
Item number 17 is contract number 4621, Rialinda Area Streetlights Award of Bid in the Amount of $541,950 to Bear Electrical Solutions, Inc.
And this is just another big thank you to the county staff for working so hard to create, pull together the resources to finish something that started in Supervisor McGlashan's tenure, I guess. It was just as she was leaving that they had half of this project done, and now we're, just as I'm finishing my last year, we're going to finish the other half. And so I know Rialinda is grateful, and it'll, we'll be excited to have lighting all the way down the main street. And so I just wanted to give a shout out to the staff and thank everyone for that. And then my next one is item 29.
"Approve new American Rescue Plan Act District Directed Funding allocations for District 4 in the amount of $1 million and for District 5 in the amount of $100,000. Authority to execute an expenditure agreement with Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District in the amount of $1,100,000 for the term beginning July 1, 2024, through December 31, 2026, to expand the mobile integrated health program with the goal of improving patient outcomes by increasing accessibility and utilization, reducing delays in appropriate care, unnecessary emergency department visits, and hospital readmission rates."
So I see that we have some of our Metro Fire in the, in the audience today, and I'm, this is really exciting. This is a conversation that started many years ago. I think when I first was elected to supervisor, this has been a problem over time. How do we deal with those patients who call for, you know, emergency services who may not necessarily be an emergency that qualifies for the emergency room? How do we deal with the crowding in the emergency rooms and the wall times and the inability to get patients processed into the hospital or even into the emergency room, which is tying up our, our first responders at the emergency room when they could be out dealing with other emergencies in the community? And this program pairs, you know, providers, it pairs a nurse practitioner or a physician's assistant with a paramedic, and it's genius what, I think it's genius what Metro Fire has, the program that Metro Fire and partners, the hospitals, the medical community, the county has also been a partner in this, and others. And I just want to, I want to thank those who stepped up and, and put money forward. There was the medical community who, who were the first contributors and who the genius behind the plan, the collaboration that took place. And I want to say that I'm proud to be able to provide some of my ARPA dollars for District 4 to support this. And I think there, I think Supervisor Hume also was part of this, and I want to thank him and say, I hope you can fix this problem. I know it's a real problem. I know this will make it better, and I want to thank Metro Fire for all that they've done. And so that we have a million, 1.1 million going to Metro Fire, which is going to really, I think, almost double what the resources they have now. So I'll be excited to see what comes, and I want to say I'm proud to be a part of contributing to it, so, thank you for that. And my last item is number 30.
I was going to comment also on 29. Is that right?
Oh, yes.
Chair, do you mind before you go to your next one?
No, not at all.
So, thank you Supervisor Frost and Supervisor Hume. I'm a little bit ashamed that I didn't dedicate some District 3 ARPA dollars to support the mobile integrated health program, which I also agree is a great program. And thank you to the SAC Metro representatives here today. I appreciate you being here for this consent item. I think, you know, I, it is, we had a presentation about mobile integrated health, I think, I don't know, sometime earlier this year, last year, a few months, within the last several months, about the benefits of that program in terms of our homelessness response, people out, unsheltered in our community, suffering from acute medical needs, how it relates to our wall time situation we're facing in Sacramento County. I think it's a great program. And, and one thing I also want to do is, I was approached by Chief House from Metro Fire, and I'm looking at, at Siobhan, and, and he mentioned that, look, if, if, if we could find some additional funding, not, not to this amount, maybe 200,000, 300,000, we may be able to figure out a way to stand up even an additional MIH unit, too. So, Siobhan, I was asking maybe to reach out to them and follow up on that and see what that might take and, and report back to me or the Board about that, because I'm very supportive. I think it plays a crucial role in our response to homelessness and our response to the, to the wall time crisis we're facing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Supervisor, Supervisor Hume. And then we'll go back to Supervisor Frost.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to add my two cents in here. Although I'm not ashamed, I do have decimal point envy when I look down at this item, how much came out of District 4 versus District 5. But this is, as was mentioned, one of the arrows in the quiver to help to bring down the offload times. And it also, I think, puts a better focus on those folks who, as was mentioned, aren't maybe having a life-threatening emergency and maybe are having more of a mental health crisis or, or, or an overdose, or something where we need to get them diverted off to a different type of care than, than an emergency room. And so I'm, I'm happy to support this project. I think it's a strong pilot project that is gaining momentum certainly throughout the state. And as I said, it's, it's one of the things we're doing to try and help address a longstanding issue. So thank you for, for calling this out. Supervisor Frost.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Frost.
My last one is item 30. Oh, did you want to?
If you don't mind, I would be remiss if I didn't stand up and introduce myself and, and represent Metro Fire. My name's John Renicki. I'm the EMS chief. And we are so grateful for this support from, from all of you, you supervisors. And it's been, our mission, you know, at Metro Fire, we want to support the community and deliver this exemplary service and find these innovative ways. We're so excited for what we've been able to develop in the last two years and the promise that it shows our community. So again, I just wanted to say on behalf of Chief House, Metro Fire, we're very grateful, and we appreciate your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Supervisor Frost.
And special thanks to Metro Fire and all that you do in, on top of fighting fires.
So item 30.
Item number 30, authority to amend and increase an expenditure agreement with On Track Program Resources, Inc. by $256,669, and to extend the term through January 31, 2025, to continue facilitating an organizational assessment and then implementing health and racial equity efforts throughout Sacramento County Public Health's program, programs and policies.
Okay. I wanted to pull this one. I'm just not comfortable with Exhibit A on this. This is probably something that began a few years back in 2021 after the COVID lockdowns and subsequent resolution declaring that racism is a public health emergency, which I didn't support. And I have questions regard, in my mind regarding the amendment, Exhibit A, and that relates to the idea of racial equity and racism as a public health emergency. And the idea of developing a progressive racial equity training plan seems counter to what is memorialized in the California Constitution. And I'm specifically referring to Article 1 of the California Constitution Declaration of Rights, 7B. "A citizen or class of citizens may not be granted privileges or immunities not granted on the same terms to all citizens." I think public health should be about citizens and our people and not their color or race. So please put me down as a no vote on 30.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any others? I believe we've discussed almost every item on consent. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment or on any item on consent?
I do not have anyone signed but to speak.
Second. Please vote, recognizing that Supervisor Frost is voting no on item 30.
Thank you. Unanimous, unanimous vote with those members present. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item number 40 is the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito and Vector Control District Annual Presentation.
Well, thank you for the invitation on an annual basis to come and talk a little bit about what we anticipate for mosquito season and West Nile virus specifically. My name's Gary Goodman. I'm the district manager for the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito Vector Control District, and we cover vector control and public health issues as it relates to vector-borne disease for all of Sacramento County and Yolo County. So our goal not only is to, to protect public health from diseases such as West Nile virus, there has also recently been reemergence of some other exotic diseases in the United States, specifically dengue transmission that has happened in Los Angeles. We've also had malaria, local malaria transmission that has happened in Florida, Texas, and even Maryland, overlapped in 2023. And so these are the concerns that we have kind of in our area specifically. But the other thing that we do is also monitor nuisance levels of mosquitoes, right? We want people to be, as we start to get into the warmer weather, be able to go outside, enjoy their backyards, enjoy picnics without being bothered by hordes of mosquitoes. And so that is what our mission specifically is. And we do this through what we call an integrated mosquito management approach. The first is public information. We have a very robust advertising program, social media, television, radio, doing, last week was actually Mosquito Awareness Week here in the state of California. So we did a number of PR components to be able to try to get people aware of mosquito breeding and the risks associated with disease transmission specifically in our particular area. We also have a robust surveillance program, and essentially this is us setting traps throughout our district. We have covered 2,000 square miles, which is quite a bit. And so we set about 100 traps almost on a daily basis to where we are able to monitor the specific numbers of mosquitoes to figure out if they're going up or down, and then, of course, taking those mosquitoes back, and we test them for virus activity, and more specifically, West Nile virus is being the one that is endemic in our particular area. Then we have our biological control program. In the center there, you see the small mosquito fish. At our facility in Elk Grove, we have 23 ponds dedicated towards breeding these small fish. We plant them in areas such as rice fields, irrigation ditches, backyard swimming pools that are not being maintained, and they'll eat the mosquito larvae that are in the water. We have, we plant about 4,000 pounds of fish, and we're probably the largest mosquito fish breeding facility in the country. So very proud of that aspect of the program that we deal with. Then we have our ecological management program. This essentially is working with landowners, specifically U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, Consumnis River Preserve, the Nature Conservancy, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, the Vicfazio Wildlife Areas. And essentially, we work with them to be able to try to reduce mosquito production on their property. When you look at especially wildlife areas or agricultural areas, they produce a lot of mosquitoes. And so there are BMPs that we, best management practices, they can implement, they can do, they can coordinate their, their mission of trying to protect wildlife and also reduce mosquito production on their property. And so we have some heavy equipment. We have a dump truck backhoe, and we offer services to be able to try to, to help those landowners reduce mosquito production. And then we get into control operations. And essentially, this is our technicians going out on a daily basis. They're looking for and treating mosquito breeding areas. So backyard swimming pools, rice fields, irrigation ditches, all of these different types of mosquito breeding habitats are places that we see. So anything that can hold water for about seven days has the possibility of breeding mosquitoes. So mosquitoes need water. First of all, only female mosquitoes bite. They are looking for the protein in your blood so that they can produce eggs. Male mosquitoes only feed on nectar. And then they look for standing water, such as these types of sources, to lay their eggs in, and then the cycle starts. So our goal is to be able to try to find them in their aquatic stage before they emerge as adults, because a female mosquito, once takes a blood meal, will lay anywhere from 200 to 250 eggs at a time. So getting them in their aquatic stage is key for us. Now, certain things are very easy for us to spot, rice fields, wetlands, open areas, agricultural places. We can spot that from literally a mile away. The more difficult thing for us is what are in people's backyards, because we can't see behind the fence. We can't see those bird baths or that bucket or that tire that is collecting water. So that's part of our education program is to allow people to understand what the risks are and just ask people to go around their yard once a week and just dump out any standing water. That will make a big deal or a big difference for their neighborhood specifically. We could, somewhat anticipating an intense season just because of the amount of rain that we've had. A few years ago, obviously, we were in a drought, and then that drought ended with all the rain that we, we saw at the end of 2022 and the beginning part of 2023, and that filled up a lot of places, a lot of places that were dry for years. And so we had a very intense season last year, and with the amount of rain that we've seen, and so obviously, the things that are in people's backyards that we can't see, we are anticipating potentially another busy season. We had almost record-setting amount of West Nile virus activity in Sacramento County last year. So as you can see, the red circles are positive mosquito samples that we collected. So this is our surveillance going out, collecting mosquitoes, and then we bring them back and we test them to see if they have virus. And then the, the yellow triangles are positive dead birds. So West Nile virus is a bird disease. It is carried by birds and vectored by mosquitoes. So mosquito bites an infected bird, picks up the virus, and then transmits it to another bird or transmits it to a human. And so as you can see, the number of human cases that we had in Sacramento County last year was 53. It's about 10 times what our really, our three-year average has been. So it was a very, very bad year for West Nile virus last year. We attributed that to the fact that we had so much water and so many new sources that we were, that we had to deal with. And so we want people to be aware that it is a real disease, and it's something that they can try to help prevent, and obviously to, to let us know if and when they're being bothered by mosquitoes. In general, this is a snapshot of the state of California. So last year, there were 428 human cases that reported in California, which is about double what typically we would see in the state of California. But in our area in Sacramento and Yolo County, we were about 10 times what our average was. The one thing I want to try to highlight here is that the majority of these human cases that get reported are the more serious, what we call neuro-invasive form of the disease. So West Nile, West Nile fever, flu-like symptoms, people get bit by an infected mosquito. If you exhibit symptoms, you'll have flu-like symptoms, something very similar to what we experienced with COVID. So that was kind of, I don't want to call it a crossover, but similar type symptoms. However, most people don't actually get diagnosed because they don't go to the doctor, they stay at home, especially over the last couple of years. You were staying home, you were quarantining yourself. It could have been West Nile instead of COVID. And so the majority of these cases that get reported are actually the neuro-invasive, the ones that people have to go to the hospital for. And so then there is testing associated with that. And so the CDC estimates that for every neuro-invasive form of the disease, there's another 30 to 70 people that are afflicted with West Nile, but it just never gets diagnosed. So you're really talking about tens of thousands of people that get, that have impacts from West Nile virus. The other thing I want to try to highlight is some people think that it's not necessarily a very serious disease. Obviously, it can lead to encephalitis-like symptoms, blindness, paralysis, and of course, even death. But in 2004, when it was first introduced into California, CDPH, California Department of Public Health, did a survey of people that had been impacted from West Nile virus. And over 50% of the people that had symptoms from West Nile virus were still experiencing some level of symptom a year later. And so it can be a very long-term debilitating disease, and we want people to be aware of that so they can take the appropriate precautions to mitigate that. Another concern that we've been bringing up in the last couple of years is invasive mosquitoes. So these are mosquitoes that are not supposed to be in our area. In our, in Sacramento and Yolo County, we have about 24 different species of mosquitoes, not all of them transmit disease. However, in the last, since 2019, we've detected new species of mosquitoes that have come through here, Adesegipti and Adesalbopictus, the yellow fever mosquito and the Asian tiger mosquito. And the concern with these is that if these mosquitoes get established in our area, they can be very efficient vectors of the more exotic diseases like dengue, chikungunya, and those, and Zika. So those types of diseases, we could actually have local transmission, which is what we saw in Southern California earlier this year. And obviously, we had malaria transmission, which is something that we've been able to eradicate for the last almost 100 years in the United States. We've had reemergence of even malaria transmission in other parts of the country. So if these particular mosquitoes get established here, then we could have these local diseases as well. And we want to try to make sure that people are aware of what the concerns are associated with that. So with that, if, if the Board has any questions, more than happy to answer that. You can get more information at our website, fightthebite.net, or give us a call. If you see a dead bird, because West Nile virus is a bird disease, please give us a call. We'll come, we'll pick it up, we'll test it, and if it turns out positive, we'll inform you that that is the case. But it also allows us to mobilize our, our staff to be able to try to, to find it and combat it as early as possible.
Thank you, Gary. A couple of things. One is, I'm guessing you don't own a short-sleeved shirt?
I do not. I'm also a ginger, so I have to protect, I don't own one from mosquitoes, I don't own the sun, so. So yes, in terms of protection, I think that's a great thing. Obviously, one of our recommendations is long sleeves so you don't get bitten by mosquitoes. We also buy repellent by the pallet if there are events that anybody has, evening baseball games, National Night Out is a big one that we hand these things out for. We also hand them out for, as we come up into 4th of July and people are outselling the, in the fireworks stands, we're more than happy to hand it out there. But we want people to try to protect themselves, and repellent is an excellent way to try to protect yourself from being bitten by mosquitoes. So all you have to do is call our district, we'll be more than happy to try to help deliver that as well.
Thank you for that. I have a couple of questions, and I know Supervisor Frost has punched in. First of all, I want to thank you. We had a constituent issue with a swimming pool next to them that was becoming an issue with mosquitoes, and we called you guys, and within 24 hours, you were out there. We sincerely appreciate that. Also, in the Pocket Green Haven area, there's a, you know, extensive canal system. Do you work with the City of Sacramento on that, in that area?
Yes, we do. We, we work with all of the incorporated cities and all areas, and essentially, in, for, we have a technician that works in that area every single day. So they are definitely aware of the canal system. We had, a couple of years ago, it was backing up. There was some odors that were coming from it. So we were, we were aware of that, and we check it regularly to make sure that it's not breeding mosquitoes. I think we also have some fish planted in certain spots in that to be able to try to take care of the problem there as well. But essentially, what we ask from the public is, if you've got a question, give us a call. And, and we try, because we have people that are out in the field on a daily basis, we try to get there actually the same day, but if not, we are, we are there within the, the next 24 hours to be able to try to address and take care of the situation.
And then the reason I ask about the canal system is, about four years ago, my wife and I moved into a house that is directly on the canal, and we feared mosquitoes, and they're not there. I mean, we have not experienced nearly as many mosquitoes as we did in our old neighborhood, which was nowhere near water. So, you know, you're obviously doing very good work, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Supervisor Frost.
Gary, I was just curious. I noticed in my community, there are some people who are just, have catastrophic neurologic events after the mosquito bite in West Nile, and others are hardly affected at all. Is that just a matter of our immune system, or is it how, how they got bit? It got into their bloodstream, or?
It's definitely, you know, individual-specific. The, typically, the older that you are or that you may experience more... The, typically, the older that you are, or that you may experience more severe symptoms. But that's not necessarily always the case. There are situations of 20-year-olds, you know, very healthy people, that get stricken with West Nile, and it's just a matter of what their particular system is. And so there is no rhyme or reason specifically, so it can strike anybody at any time. There are a couple things. The age is one factor. The older you are, the more susceptible you might be to it. They've also come out with diabetes. If you have diabetes, then potentially, you know, your immune system might be a little bit more compromised, and you might have more serious impacts from it. But we want people to be aware that it really is indiscriminate. We've seen children that have been stricken very seriously and died. We've seen, you know, the entire range of folks. So the main message is, try to protect yourself. One, try not to breed mosquitoes in your own property, so that you're not exacerbating the problem. And then, two, protect yourself with a good repellent, or long sleeves, or give us a call. We want to come out, we'll go out there, we'll do a surveillance aspect of it, and we'll tell you what we're seeing in the particular area. And then you can get information on our website specifically about where virus activity is happening. We have interactive maps associated with that, to be able to try to let people know what's going on. And then, of course, our public outreach component, I'm sure you are all familiar with our PIO, Luz Maria Robles. She's very good about trying to get information out to the public, and we do very targeted things specifically, sometimes on social media, to where we target zip codes, where we're seeing activity of those types of aspects.
Your public messaging works, and I want you to know, I think about you guys all the time, because when I'm out in my backyard, if, you know, you can't help it, a garbage can or a bucket, it seems it's easy to have water gathering on your property. So I think it's working, what you're doing, and I want to thank you for your advocacy.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
And if you can have your PIO send out to the five of us, something that could be put in, we all have newsletters.
Yep.
That would be great.
Perfect. We can, we will inundate you with stories.
Thank you. Okay. We'll see you next year.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Is there any member of the public that has an item, or would like to just address the board on this item? Hearing none. Next item, please.
Next item, item number 41, May is Bike Month 2024 Presentation.
Good morning, Supervisors. I am here to talk to you about the best month of the year, and that's May. It's May is Bike Month coming up this next week, and we're really excited about it. My name is Deborah Banks. I'm the Executive Director of the Sacramento Area Bicycle Advocates, and we've been hosting May is Bike Month for the last three years. It's been an amazing ride to do that, ride, literally. After the pandemic, a lot of people took to riding their bikes, and the bicycle industry has boomed, which is an amazing thing. We want more people to trade their car keys for bicycle trips. That's the whole idea about May is Bike Month. And last year, we had over 500,000 miles ridden, half a million miles, that's amazing, just in the month of May. We had 38,000 trips made by people, and what I mean by a trip is, majority of us use our cars for very short trips, one to five miles around town. All of those things are very doable by bicycle. And so you trade your car keys for a bicycle trip, go to the shops, go to the store, go see your kids in a park, et cetera. You are saving CO2 and helping with the environment. To that end, last year, we saved 61,000 tons of CO2, and we had over 16,000 people, or 16,000 trips made by people by bikes. All good things for people's health, all good things for the environment, and it helps us push for better bicycle infrastructure, which we think is a really good thing, too. And their swag. We have May is Bike Month socks for all of you. I'm going to give them to Alma.
Thank you. Thank you.
Not only that, we set up and host events throughout the whole course of May. And we don't just do it ourselves, because we are working with six counties of SECOG. So we have partners distributed all over the six counties. And we have a common calendar, and there are over 75 events on that calendar. So everybody can find something to do and to ride their bike, whether it's an Energizer station, going to the American River Bike Festival, coming to the kickoff festival that we're doing in West Sacramento. There are a ton of things to do. And if any of you have, look around in your area, and you don't see something that's going on, then please get in touch with us, because we'll make something happen. We're really excited about it, as always, and we can't wait to have all of you guys out there. I have an ask as well. We would love to be able to promote May is Bike Month through your newsletters, and if that's the case, that would be great. And thank you so much for taking the time. Oh, one last thing. We can outrun the bite, outrun mosquitoes. By bicycle.
Long-sleeve shirts.
And long-sleeve shirts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item number 42 is a presentation of resolution proclaiming April 30th as National Therapy Animal Day.
If Janet and Henry are here, would you join me at the podium? Now, you have to guess which one's Janet and which one's Henry. I feel calmer already. Thank you. Scientific research shows that interacting with therapy animals can reduce stress, relieve depression, slow heart rate, lower blood pressure, and strengthen the immune system. Exceptional therapy animals who partner with their human companions, bring comfort and healing to those in need, can significantly enhance emotional well-being and positively contribute to social and cognitive health, and in the workplace, can greatly boost morale, decrease stress levels, and enhance overall employee satisfaction and productivity. So next week, we celebrate National Therapy Animal Day on April 30th, which provides an opportunity to raise awareness and educate the public about the role that therapy animals play in enhancing the health and well-being of humans, and honors the thousands of dedicated pets and handlers who volunteer their time and compassion during their visits. I also want to point out my disappointment, that, I'm so sorry, that... So Sadie, the therapy horse, could not be here today. There was an actual scheduling conflict, believe it or not. Sadie's a six-year-old that has been doing therapy in dignity health hospitals, several senior centers, counseling centers, rehabilitation, nursing centers, schools, and homebound individuals, to mention a few, for approximately four years, and it's just one more example of the great work that you do. So thank you very much. I'd like to present you with this.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, thank you.
Would you like me to?
No, it's okay. Back, back, back. Good boy. First, I'd like to show you a trick. Henry is not allowed to bark in the hospital. Henry is a seven-year-old Sutter Bay Retriever, bred for this job, picked out of his litter for this work. Sit, please. And we're not allowed to bark in the hospital. So we volunteer at Kaiser Roseville. We visit patients in the hospital, people receiving chemotherapy, children go, oh, he says, "Give the treat." Yes. So no barking in the hospital. So it's an honor and privilege to experience the magic that I experience every day that I work with Henry. He will take me to people who need him the most. He seems to sense the stress level in people, and sometimes, just hugging a dog is the very best medicine. So thank you so much for honoring us. We're here on behalf of all the therapy dogs and handlers in the area, and we thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Alma is usually, if you look at the photo, is there somebody?
It's what he is.
Okay, here we go.
Thank you.
Can I sit? Let me see if I can get this. That's my child. Look? Oh. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks, Henry. Next item, please.
For your next item, you have a, the County Service Area Number One, Zone Number One, Public Hearing on the Benefit Category Change, and Levy of Increased Service Charges for 7945 Sorento Road.
Good morning, members of the board. Joe Grassick with County Engineering. So the 7945 Sorento Road project is located at the southwest corner of West Alberta and Sorento Roads, and includes construction of a four-story office building and a warehouse, which will serve as headquarters for RCI Plumbing. During the entitlement process, the project was conditioned to provide full funding for street and safety light maintenance, which is provided by County Service Area Number One for unincorporated county. And as a result, the project proponent submitted an application to initiate the benefit category change process, and in response to that request, a ballot and notice were mailed to the property owner on March 8th. Currently, the project is on a single existing parcel in the safety light-only benefit category, and is assessed $2.56 annually. The proposed change is to the enhanced street and safety light non-residential category with an annual assessment of approximately $1,352.60 based on the length of public frontage. So if there are no questions from the board, we recommend that the board open the public hearing, consider any written and oral testimony, objections, and protests, close the public hearing, and direct the clerk to tabulate the returned protest ballot.
Are there any questions from the board? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board on this item at this time? Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and would the clerk please tabulate the returned protest ballot?
We received one ballot. The legal owners Big Valley Syndicate LLC, the site address is 7945 Sorento Road, Alberta, California 95626, and the ballot is in favor of the proposed change to the benefit category.
Okay, Joe.
Great, thank you. And so now, I will read the fill-ins for the resolution. So in Section 2, at the close of the hearing, the board had received zero written protests. In Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the board had received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of benefit category, and 0% was in opposition.
All right. Sir.
We have approval.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item number 44 is approval to amend various prior year's action plans for community development block grant. Approval to amend and execute the CDBG and home loan agreement to provide an additional $4,900,000 to Sabrook Apartments with Jamboree Housing Corporation or related entity, and authorization to enter into and execute an amendment to the existing loan agreements to amend its budget and to make related findings.
Good morning. Christine Weigert from SHRA. Today, I'll be presenting on two projects. Both are requesting authorization to add additional funding to previously approved affordable housing projects. First, I'd like to give a quick overview on what has been happening to development costs over the last couple of years. These issues are not only just affecting Sabrook and Cornerstone, but other projects as well. I should also point out that SHRA staff, consisting of architects, engineers, and other construction professionals, review and approve all construction costs prior to recommending funding. So common development issues we are seeing include, one, there's been an increase in overall construction costs. A construction budget contingency at the outset of project, you know, typically 5% to 10% of the construction budget, is usually sufficient to cover unexpected increases, but that is not true recently. Cost of far exceeded what was anticipated two or three years ago. Two, there's been an increase in insurance rates. Fires and other natural disasters have caused insurance rates to skyrocket. And three, even after COVID, there's been disruptions in supply chains causing delays in longer construction times. Equipment orders such as electrical switch gears have been backordered and may take months longer than expected to receive. These longer construction timelines mean paying more interest on construction loans, and even more concerning is the variable interest rates have gone up considerably, causing huge cost increases. In January, when we last accepted applications for financing, five previously approved funding projects, funded projects requested additional funds. I can't tell you how unusual that is. When reviewing the funding applications, we looked at various factors before considering SHRA funds. One, with increased project costs, that allows developers to receive additional tax credit equity. So we made sure the developers were leveraging those additional funds. Two, we ensure the developer is borrowing as much as possible. Rents have increased since the project's original financing to allow for more debt. And three, we ensure the developer had increased their development fees, or decreased their developer fees as much as possible in contributing those funds to the project. So with that general overview, I'd like to present information specific to Sabrook Apartments. Staff is seeking your approval for an additional $4.9 million in CDBG and home funds towards the rehabilitation and new construction of Sabrook Apartments, and to conduct a public hearing to amend various year's action plans in order toward the funds. Located on 47th Avenue, near Highway 99, the site was transformed from a motel to 60 affordable units in 2005. Sabrook is comprised of families with at least one member having mental or physical disabilities and formerly homeless. There are project-based vouchers provided for the existing units to ensure residents pay no more than 30% of their income towards rent, and there's also one manager's unit. In addition to the existing units, construction is underway on 27 new units, ranging from studios to three bedrooms with area meeting incomes between 30 and 60%. Previously, Jamboree Housing developer received approval for $8,450,000 in SHRA funding for the project. DOMA's management company will continue to be the property manager, and Luther's Social Services and Housing with HART will provide case management and residence services. The SCOVA work for Sabrook remains consistent since approval in June of 2021. However, the overall project cost has increased by $13 million. Most of the increase is due to higher construction and environmental remediation costs. The requirements of vapor barriers, waterproofing, and ventilation increased cost and delayed the construction. That delay drove up interest rates and increased relocation expenses. SHRA funding will cover approximately a third of the additional needed with tax credits, higher loan amount, and reduced developer fees paying for the remainder. In summary, requesting approval of the additional $4.9 million loan for Sabrook Apartments, which should be completed this summer. And representatives from Jamboree Housing and I are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Christine. Mr. Hume.
Thank you, Chair. No issue with today's action, per se. I mean, obviously, it's kind of, it is what it is, and we'd like to be able to spread that money around, but we're all the way pregnant with this project at this point. My question is relative to sort of the history of this particular complex. It says that in 2005, it was converted from a motel into affordable housing units?
Yes.
And was there reconstruction and remodeling done at that time?
There was, there was. However, we learned through that process with the original developer, which was not Jamboree, they purchased the property and rehabbing it, that cinder block is not a great conveyor of, well, it traps in moisture, let's just say. And when the kitchens were added, because it was a motel, so we added kitchens to the units, moisture got trapped, which created a bit of a mold and other issues for the property. So that is being taken care of now, and certainly, we all realize that cinder block is a potential issue now.
We don't like to use four-letter words in these chambers, so that is a serious issue. And, okay, so it was done, but it wasn't done correctly, and so now we're going back and kind of fixing past mistakes?
That's part of it. Also, you know, we were, over 15 years later, the units needed just some rehabilitation as well, kitchens, bathrooms needed some work, and of course, the addition of the 27 units.
I was going to say, those are new units that weren't previously there.
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, as a supervisor, we've worked closely with SHRA on these issues. It's been, we have definitely turned lemons into lemonade on this one. It's been, it's been tough. But I want to also point out that, and Mr. DeFonte's used to be saying this, you know, this is just another example of time is money in the development industry, and if we don't make projects happen quicker, these delays cause these increases in costs, whether it's a private market-rate housing, or it's affordable public housing. So we just have to be diligent to try to get these projects done as quickly as possible. Otherwise, we keep seeing this happen, to no fault of our own. So, any questions of the board? No? If there are any member of the public like to comment at this time? Hearing none. Is there a motion? I will move approval. Please vote. So we just have to be diligent to try to get these projects done as quickly as possible. Otherwise, we keep seeing this happen, no fault of our own. So, any questions of the board? No? If there are any members of the public like to comment at this time? Hearing none. Is there a motion? I will move approval.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Christine. Next item.
Item number 45, approval to amend the Home Investment Partnership Program loan agreements for $1,400,000 for Cornerstone North and South. Authorization to provide an additional $600,000 in Affordable Housing Fund loan to Cornerstone North. Authorization for Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency to amend its budget and to make related findings.
Good morning. Christine Weigert again. So staff is requesting approval of an additional $2 million in home and affordable housing funds for the Cornerstone North and South project located on 46th Street and Highway 99. The project is 108 affordable units on land previously owned by SHRA, with 16 project-based vouchers for families that are homeless. The units are one, two, and three bedrooms, and rent will range from 30% to 60% of area meeting income. Mutual Housing previously received $12 million of financing plus seller carryback for the land from SHRA. Mutual will be the property manager for this project and provide residence services. In addition, Lutheran Social Services will provide case management to assist formerly homeless residents. The scope of work for Cornerstone remains consistent since the approval in January of 2022. However, the overall construction costs have increased by over $10 million. Again, most of the increase is due to higher construction costs, interest rates, and insurance. SHRA's additional funding will cover approximately a quarter of the additional costs with tax credits, increased debt, and reduced developer fee paying for the remaining increase. Construction on Cornerstone North and South has recently been completed, and in closing, staff is recommending approval on additional $2 million loan. And representatives from Mutual Housing and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of the board? Seeing none. Is there any member of the public like to address the board at this time on this item? Seeing none. I will move approval.
I'm sorry, and I didn't hear the second.
Certainly.
Thank you. Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mutual Housing and SHRA. Next item, please.
Item number 46. We need to, it's scheduled at 10:30, so we have about a seven-minute. Do you want to take nominations?
Let's do it.
For today's consideration, you are continuing to May 21st, the Development Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, the Sunrise Recreation and Park District, and Silvan Cemetery District, and then continuing to June 4th, Building Board of Appeals, Cemetery Advisory Commission, Out Grove Kasumnas Cemetery District, and In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee. And then for today's items, we have the Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to May 21st.
Carmichael Oldham Farms Community Planning Advisory Council.
Also continue to May 21st, please.
Thank you. Children's Coalition.
Chief's appointing Sherry Griffith.
Okay, and continue the remainder to May 21st.
Please.
Community Review Commission.
For District 1, please continue to May 21st.
Okay, and District 2?
Reappoint Chris Baker and waive the process.
Second.
Please vote. Unanimous vote. Supervisor Desmond?
Please reappoint Theodore Walter and waive the process.
Second.
Unanimous vote. And Supervisor Frost?
I nominate Samuel Summers, and I don't know if I can waive the process.
Yes.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
Lot of process waiting.
Unanimous vote. Thank you. Get him on there. County Service Area 4B?
Please continue to June 4.
Okay, and Supervisor Hume?
I'd like to nominate Cody Craig and waive the process.
Second.
Please vote. Unanimous vote. Thank you. For Fair Oaks Cemetery District?
Please continue to May 21st.
Okay, thank you. Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council?
Please continue to May 7.
Okay. North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council?
Continue to June 4.
And?
For District 1, continue to May 21st.
Thank you. Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council?
I nominate Katrina Womack and waive the process.
Thank you. Unanimous vote. Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board?
For District 1, please continue to May 21st.
Okay. Supervisor Desmond?
Please continue to June 4.
Okay. Supervisor Frost?
I nominate Epiphany Peterson.
And Supervisor Hume?
Please continue to June 4.
Understood. Thank you. Sacramento County Youth Commission?
District 1 would like to nominate Manuel Emmonfor and Justin Huang, and waive the process.
Second.
Okay.
Now speak slowly, Alma.
Oh. Unanimous vote with those members present. Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council? And this is Supervisor Hume?
Yeah, I was just waiting for you to call on me, so I could tell you.
This is a lot to ask for someone that does auctions, right?
That's right. It's very difficult to speak slowly. I'm used to going the other way. Please continue to June 4.
Okay, understood. And that concludes your nominations.
Okay, we will take a two-minute break. Come back to order. Next item, please.
Item number 46 is the Popeyes Restaurant on North Watt Avenue. Use permit, special development permit, and design review for a property located at 6849 Watt Avenue, approximately 450 feet north of the intersection of Watt Avenue and Elkhorn Boulevard within the North Watt Avenue Corridor Plan in the North Highlands Community. The environmental document is exempt, and I will need to take an oath for this item. If there's anyone who wishes to speak on item number 46, please stand to be sworn.
Seeing none.
Okay, thank you.
No, okay, sorry.
Okay. If you wish to address the board for item 46 on the agenda, please stand to be sworn. Please raise your hand, and the appropriate responses I do. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth, so help you God? If you do not swear, do you so affirm? When you go to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement I have been sworn.
Good morning, board members. I am Leanne Mueller. I will be doing the presentation for this item today. So as noted, this is the Popeyes at the North Watt Corridor. This project is located at 6849 Watt Avenue. It is approximately 450 feet north of the intersection of Watt Avenue and Elkhorn Boulevard. It is within the North Highlands Community. It has a designation of commercial mixed use within the North Watt Corridor, and it is surrounded by a mix of retail, commercial, multifamily, and general commercial uses. So the entitlements for this are a use permit to allow a drive-through with amplified sound within 300 feet of a residential zoning district. So that 300 feet is the existing multifamily uses that are across Watt Avenue, and then also the vacant property that is currently located to the north. It is still a special development permit to allow deviations to the North Watt Corridor SBA, specifically the maximum front yard setback, the minimum build-to percentage, and the minimum floor area ratio. It is also a design review to comply with the North Watt Corridor and the countywide design guidelines. So by way of background, the board may recall that this was originally before the board in March 14 of 2023, and staff was recommending denial of this project due to the inconsistencies with the general plan and the North Watt Corridor Plan as they related to transit-oriented development, community placemaking, and walkability. At the conclusion of that item, the board did direct staff to work with the applicant for an improved project design that was more in alignment with the intent of the corridor and the general plan policy. So in the intervening time, staff has worked with the applicant team as directed, and they have redesigned the project. It should be noted that the project initially consisted of a slightly over 3,000-square-foot fast-food restaurant with a drive-through. It did have some outdoor dining, and it had a total of 31 parking spaces. The redesigned project, which we will go into in more detail as we go through the presentation, is approximately 2,600 square feet. It is still a fast-food restaurant with a drive-through, but they have added a large covered patio area adjacent to the street, and they have reduced the overall number of parking spaces, and they have added a lot of other items that would lead to the enhanced placemaking and walkability that the corridor looks for. So, for example, when we go over this, the project has been redesigned. It has additional landscaping at the north area of the building, more adjacent to the street and nearer to its entrance. There is additional street tree landscaping along Watt Avenue. They have added a larger covered patio, which is between the drive-through lane and the building. There is additional elevation materials to the building itself. One of the things you'll notice when we go through is the increased windows and glazing that fronts out to both the front of the building and Watt Avenue. They have added, in an effort for placemaking, a vegetable-themed sculpture, and one of the items you may recall that was discussed at the previous board was enhanced paving and enhanced walkway from the street to the restaurant. So as we go through, we'll point out areas where that has occurred, and they have reduced the overall vehicle parking spaces associated with the project. So what you're looking at is two site plans. On the left-hand side, you are looking at what was presented to the board last year. On the right-hand side, you are looking at the new proposed site plan. So as the board will notice, there is enhanced paving at the driveway. The applicant has also provided a enhanced walkway from Watt Avenue. There's enhanced paving where it crosses the drive-through lane, and then they have added this area here, which is where the vegetable-themed sculpture is. And then along the front of the building, you'll notice there is a wider walkway, and it is also leading into this patio area, which they have proposed. It's an outdoor seating area. It has four tables. And so that is what you're looking at as far as the site plan. When you're looking at the landscape plan, again, on the left is what was originally proposed last year, and you will notice that in the site plan, one of the things that you will see is that there are enhanced trees along the Watt Avenue Corridor, so it's much more of a screen than it was before. And then the applicant has added some additional trees adjacent to this outdoor patio area, so you'll see the additional trees here, and then they have added some additional trees adjacent to what is the entrance to the restaurant.
Leanne, can you hold that one for a moment?
Yes.
It's just kind of confusing, the cars stacking. You have one lane and then two lanes. So where's that second lane going?
So I believe this is what they call a Y-drive-through, in that the two lanes narrow down into one as it gets up to the window.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So now we're getting to the exterior elevation redesign of the restaurant. So on the left-hand side is, again, what was presented to you last year. On the right-hand side is the new design. So one of the things that you will notice is that when you're looking at this elevation, which is the entrance to the restaurant and the north-facing elevation, which also faces the parking lot, you'll notice that they have increased their windows. Essentially, it's like a floor-to-ceiling window glazing. This is the outdoor patio, which is also adjacent here, and you'll notice that there is windows that open up here into the outdoor patio. One of the other things is along the south elevation, they've made more of a presence with the drive-through windows. And then another item which you will see is there is more of artwork on the side of the building, which is more themed to the restaurant itself. I believe there are abstract chickens, which I guess would be fitting with the theme of a Popeyes chicken restaurant. So again, that's what you're looking at as far as the redesign. So one of the things that staff did want to point out again is more of an effort to make an entrance or placemaking as far as the restaurant with the patio and then the increased visibility with these glazing windows here. And then it gets us to the vegetable-themed sculpture. One of the things, as we're going to placemaking, that the applicant did want to essentially do is, when we were talking about, when you go, I'll just go back to this show you, because I think I did not go over it in detail, but right in this location here, you'll notice that they expanded this area, and they are proposing to put the vegetable-themed sculpture right there, so it will be visible from Watt and is in prominence near the front of So again, the vegetable-themed sculpture. So this proposed project has been redesigned, and it has been brought into closer alignment with the applicable corridor plan and the general plan policies. Specifically, the actions work to implement general plan policies related to placemaking and commercial corridor revitalization, so that's Policies 20 and 12 in our land use element. Further, in regards to the special development permit findings from the corridor plan, which staff was not able to make in the previous design, they are that the proposed deviation from the SPA standards is justified by exceptional design over and above the SPA standards, and that any proposed use can provide evidence that it brings a benefit to the public and does not create a nuisance or public safety concerns. So therefore, staff is now recommending that these findings can be met with the redesign of this restaurant. So staff's recommendation is approval. I guess one of the other things that we wanted to mention is that the North Highlands Foothill Farm did recommend approval of this project, as did the Drac. So planning and environmental review staff does recommend that the Board of Supervisors recognize the exempt status of their quest under Section 15303 of SEQA, that they approve the use permit to allow the drive-through restaurant with amplified sound within 300 feet of a residential zoning district, that they approve the special development permit subject to the findings and conditions it attachment to, and that they find the project is in substantial compliance with our design guidelines and the North Watt Avenue Commercial Corridor Design Guidelines. This concludes staff's presentation, and I can answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you. Before we have the proponent come up, is there any questions from the board? Seeing none, would the proponent like to make a statement?
Good morning. Julio Teneharo, Milestone Associates. I've been sworn in. Well, I want to thank the staff. They definitely helped us with this project, as you noticed, it's been here a while, but we were really excited with the result. One point I wanted to make was this restaurant will be run and operated by the current franchisee of Popeyes, which is just down the road. So the difference is that he's currently leasing the property where he's at, and he's buying, he bought this property that's presented before you, so he's actually going to be an owner-operator of his own property, which he's really, really wanting for, he really needs, and so he's really excited about that. So owner-operator. As you guys saw, it's a really unique design. There's no other restaurant. Although it's a product typical design for Popeyes, we did add a lot of things to this restaurant that you won't see anywhere else, and that's going to be unique, since this franchisee and the applicant is operator of the local Popeyes. He really has a really good relationship with the neighborhood, and that's why we got the the recommendation of approval from the neighborhood communities. So we, we feel that this new restaurant's gonna just improve that existing location, provide an updated presentation, operations. As you guys probably know, they have a lot of new restaurant items, food items, that are, again, conscious of what's, what's going on as far as the food industry. So they're definitely concerned about, the concern that were brought up, that were addressed by staff, I think we addressed them as far as traffic concerns, noise concerns. We just had a lot of back and forth, and we came to a really good conclusion where I believe what's being presented today, today, to you today is gonna be a really good improvement and benefit for the community. So with that, I'm just here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Supervisor Frost.
I don't have any questions. I just want to say I was discouraged when we couldn't do it in the first place, but I think what the applicant came up with and, and what staff came up with is a real improvement. And I'm excited about those giant vegetables in the middle of, you know, our neighborhood. I think it's wonderful when a business that's already there wants to invest and take ownership. And so I want to move approval.
Second. Okay. And I just, for the record, I'm a big fan of the abstract hot chicken sandwich. And I want to give, I want to give the public an opportunity. Is there any members of the public that'd like to address the board on this side? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number 47. This is Arco at Larchmont Village, a use permit amendment, special development permit, and design review for a property located at 4261 Elkhorn Boulevard, at the northwest corner of the intersection of Elkhorn Boulevard and Walarga Road, and the North Highlands Foothill Farms community. And the environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration. I will also need to take an oath for this item.
Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board on this item? You'll have to be sworn in.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand, and the appropriate response is I do. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give the board is the truth to help you God? If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
When you go to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement I have been sworn. Thank you.
Good morning, board members. Again, Leanne Mueller with Planning and Environmental Review. This project is PLMP 2021-00268, which is the Arco at Larchmont Village. This project is located at 4261 Elkhorn Boulevard, is the northwestern corner of the intersection of Elkhorn Boulevard and Walarga Road. It is in the Larchmont neighborhood of the North Highlands community. This site is developed with an existing gas station, which was constructed in 1992. The site is fully developed with the 12 pumps under the canopy, a car wash, and it does have an under-canopy convenience store currently. So the subject zoning district is light commercial, and this is in a developed area, mostly commercially, except for, you will notice, that there is an area of single-family residential along its western project boundary. So the current project configuration was established in 1988. The automobile service station, car wash, and convenience store uses were approved by the board in 1989, and it was to be used as a primary service station. It did set hours of operation associated with that. Those hours were 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. for the service station and convenience store, and then it was 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. for that car wash. And again, the existing structures were constructed in 1992. So this project is a use permit amendment from that original use permit to allow the reconstruction of that existing gas station and convenience store with 24-hour operation. It also has a special development permit to deviate from some of our development standards. So it's the interior side yard setback for the proposed convenience store adjacent to the single-family uses, the minimum landscape coverage for service stations, the planter widths adjacent to the residential, the trash enclosure perimeter landscaping, and then the maximum signage for that particular auto service station. And then it is obviously the design review to comply with the countywide design guidelines. So when you're looking at the site plan here on the left-hand side, the applicant is proposing to remove that car wash, which is located approximately right here. And then what they are asking to do is also replace that under-canopy convenience store with additional pumps, and they're going to put a new approximately 2,600 square foot store in the location where that car wash was generally located. Then they're going to move the trash enclosure farther south on the site, and then they're going to put some additional signage on the pumps and canopies. They are also upgrading the landscaping along the perimeter of the site. So essentially, when you look at the, this here, they are adding in additional trees, and then they are also adding and redoing the landscaping along the Walarga frontage And then one of the other things they're doing is there is an existing driveway on the site, so they are closing that driveway and moving it farther to the north, so that it is farther away from the corner. So what you're looking at is the proposed elevations for the convenience store. As you can see, it does meet our design guidelines as recommended by the DRAC. This is the color and materials board to give you an idea of what the design is going to look like. So again, the original use permit was granted in 1998. The demolition of the car wash is proposed, and then it would be replaced by the convenience store. The new convenience store would be in the approximate location of the car wash, and then they're going to put four new pumps under the canopy where that previous convenience store was. They will be, as I discussed, adding additional landscaping throughout the site, so that does get it actually closer to our landscaping standards of 20% for gas stations. So this did go to the North Highlands Foothill Farms CPAC on July 26 of 2022. They did recommend approval of the project. It also went to the DRAC, and they recommended that the Board of Supervisors find the project consistent with the design guidelines. And then the Planning Commission reviewed this project on February 26 of this year, and they also recommended that the Board of Supervisors approve the proposed project. So this site did have an initial study and mitigated negative declaration that was prepared pursuant to SEQA. It was released on December 5 of 2023, and we didn't get any significant comments at the close of that. The impacts that were discussed were aesthetics, air quality, noise, hazards, and hazardous materials, and then greenhouse gas emissions. It was determined that the project would result in a less-than-significant impact with the mitigation measures, which are in a good conditions of approval. So staff recommendation for this is that the planning, the, sorry, the Board of Supervisors determine that the environmental analysis prepared to SEQA is adequate and complete, that you adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, that you approve the use permit amendment subject to the findings and conditions, that you approve the special development permit subject to the findings and conditions, and that you find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines, subject to the findings and conditions. I can answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is also here today.
Any questions? Okay, hearing none. Would the applicant like to address the board? Recognizing there were no questions.
Good morning. I'm Leslie Burnside with Barghousen Consulting Engineers, and I have been sworn. I also have Paul Bajwa here. He is the operator and owner of the property. He is a founding member of the Antelope Business Community, PBID. He's very involved with the community, participates in the security patrol programs that the group puts together, as well as, you know, business improvement programs with the group. I don't really have a presentation here, I was just gonna comment again about 24 hours. We are seeking parity with our direct competitor across the street, who has a very similar physical setting to this location, and has been operating 24 hours since that 7-Eleven was built. They have four or five houses directly on their western property line also. We are removing a considerable amount of noise in the car wash. Let's see. We are in agreement with the conditions, including the revised conditions from DOT that you probably just saw yesterday, or maybe Friday. We're fine with that, too. In fact, we caught some issues with the way the original ones were written, so we were able to resolve that instead of a continuance, and very happy about that. So I can answer any questions that you have, and I thank you for your kind consideration today.
Thank you, Chair. Not a question. I just wanted to thank you for reinvesting in and upgrading your property. I think it's gonna provide a greater amenity and convenience to the neighborhood. And with that, I would move the item.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number 48. This is Stockton and Gerber 76 Service Station, a use permit, special development, design review, and PCN for a property located at 7599 Stockton Boulevard in the South Sacramento Community, and the environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
All right. Good morning. Emma Patton, Senior Planner here this morning to present the Stockton and Gerber 76 Station project for your consideration. If you can. So first, I'd like to note that the proposed project involves two separate requests. The first request is to consider the development of the site. The development includes the proposed convenience store, the fueling station, the car wash, and all requiring a use permit, a special development permit, and a design review. The second request is for a PCN to allow a type 20 liquor license. The project site is shown here. The project site is located at 7559 Stockton Boulevard. It's at the northeast corner of Stockton and Gerber Road in the South Sacramento community. You can see a zoning map. The property is zoned light commercial and is surrounded by apartments to the north and to the east, a service station to the south, and a mix of uses to the west, including a auto dismantler and a residential care facility. Before we get into details of each of the requests, I do want to note that during the course of this application, the applicant has provided a variety of site configurations, including configurations with the convenience store located closer to the street, and configurations with the proposed convenience store located on the sort of northern portion of the street with the fuel canopy closer to, to the street. During a March 27, 2023 Planning Commission meeting, commissioners noted a preference for earlier versions of the proposed development that consisted of that convenience store being located closer to the street. So in response to that direction, the applicant did say, did take some time to revise their plans to the site configuration now shown on the right. So to permit this development, the applicant requests a use permit to allow a 24-hour convenience store, an incidental car wash, a special development permit to deviate from side, interior side, and front yard setbacks, and a design review. It is important to note that the preferred site, site configuration does require additional development standard deviations compared to some of the earlier iterations. Specifically, the preferred site plan requires a special development permit to reduce the front and side street yard setbacks. So here you can see the proposed site plan and landscaping, featuring the convenience store at the corner, the fuel canopy behind, and then the drive-through car wash towards the northern boundary of the site. A masonry wall is proposed along the northern and eastern boundaries adjacent to the existing apartment complex. Additionally, new landscaping is proposed along those northern and eastern boundaries, along the front edge, and also within the parking lot. Finally, the applicant is also proposing a robust EV strategy, or electrical vehicle charging strategy, that includes one level-two EV charging station, two level-three EV charging stations, and then infrastructure underneath the fuel canopy to one day convert those gas pumps to level-three charging stations in the future. Here you can see the proposed elevations of the convenience store building, which would be the most prominent feature of the site at the corner of Stockton and Gerber Boulevard, or Gerber Road. Access to the convenience store would be available from both the parking area and the street. So you can see on both the, the front elevation and what is the rear elevation facing the, the parking lot, there's, there's pedestrian access. So in addition to these requests, the permit, to permit the development of the site, under the separate application, the applicant requests a type 20 public convenience or necessity letter, or a PCN letter, to sell beer and wine beverages at the convenience store. On this map, you can see the location of the proposed type 20 liquor license towards the center of this map, and surrounding type 20 licenses shown in blue, and type 21 licenses shown in green, all within one mile of the site. Within the one-mile radius, there are several sensitive receptors, including schools, daycare facilities, and a detox facility. The schools are shown in blue. The daycare facilities are symbolized by this red box here. And then the detox facility is to the northeast of Stockton Road and south of Flubing Avenue. In the case of the Stockton 76 project, a PCN is required as it is in a high-crime reporting area and not due to overconcentration. Should this PCN be issued and the liquor license eventually be issued by ABC, this would result in the, in the third of three allowed liquor licenses within the census tract. The county is unable to condition PCNs, but in this case, there is a use permit being considered alongside the PCN, and the applicant has willingly accepted use permit conditions related to the, to security and alcohol sales that help to reduce safety and security concerns related to the on-sale of alcohol. The proposed conditions limit the sale of alcohol based on the, the hours that alcohol could be sold. So in this case, the conditions limit the hours to 10 p.m., limit the hours so that alcohol could not be sold between the hours of 10 p.m. and 7 a.m. It also prohibits the sale of singles and addresses several other safety and security concerns on site. An initial study mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the development entitlements for this project, which addresses air quality, noise, biological resources, and cultural resources, amongst other resource areas. The project would result in less-than-significant impacts with the implementation of mitigation This project was brought to the South Sacramento CPAC, the DRAC, and to the Planning Commission for recommendations and consideration. I do want to note that the DRAC and the Planning Commission did not consider the PCN requests consistent with county procedures, but the South Sacramento CPAC did provide recommendations on both the development entitlements as well as the PCN. So this project was brought to the South Sacramento CPAC in November 2021, and they can, recommended that the board deny both the development entitlements and the PCN. Their concerns were centered on overconcentration of gas stations and the proposed development not being perhaps the best use of the subject property. They also noted potential nuisance concerns with the adjacent apartment complex. Later, in August 2023, following the revisions to the project to push that convenience store closer to the street, staff returned to the CPAC to share the applicant's revised development proposal. The CPAC noted that the changes to the site design did not resolve their concerns as were initially provided. In August of 2023, again, following those revisions to the development plan, staff brought the project to the Designer Review Advisory Committee for their consideration. The DRAC noted that the latest version of the plans were the superior option and complemented efforts to improve site circulation, improve the convenience store streetscape presence, and consider the future use of, of the site with the option to remove the fuel, fuel pumps and replace the EV chargers. Finally, the Planning Commission- Finally, the Planning Commission was generally satisfied with the site redesign and enhanced EV structure. I will note that one commissioner remained concerned about the service station use on the site, noting that alternative use could be a better, could better serve the community. After deliberation, the commission voted three yes, one no, one absent to recommend approval of the project to the board. So staff's recommendation is broken up into two parts. The board will first take action on the development entitlement shown on the left and then take action on the PCN request as provided on the right. So I will begin by providing staff's recommendation on the development proposal on the left. So the proposed development is consistent with the general plan and community plan. With approval of the special development permit, the proposed development is consistent with the zoning code and applicable development standards. The proposed development is compatible with surrounding uses as conditioned. The project would result in less-than-significant impacts to most environmental topics, and mitigation measures are proposed to reduce potential impacts to a less-than-significant level. And finally, the project is in compliance with the design guidelines. So based on this analysis, staff is recommending approval of the request, specifically that the board determine the environmental analysis prepared for the project is adequate and complete, that you adopt the MMRP, approve the use permit, approve the special development permit, and find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines, all subject to findings and conditions. Next, I'll provide staff's recommendation on the PCN. The PCN would not result in overconcentration of liquor licenses within the census tract. While the site is located within a high-crime reporting area, the applicant willingly accepted conditions related to the sale of alcohol on the use permit. Because the use permit conditions reduce safety and security concerns related to the on-sale of alcohol, and because of the additional community benefits the convenience store will offer, including electrical vehicle chargers and healthy food access within the convenience store itself as conditioned, staff is recommending approval of this PCN. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you might have. And the applicant team is also available today if you have any questions for them.
Thank you. I'll have plenty of comments at the end after we've had a chance to hear from the board and the public. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Emma. And I'll certainly be eager to hear the chair's comments on this project in District 2. But I just want to, I just want to call out. I think it's interesting that in this case, no overconcentration issue with the PCN, but certainly a high-crime issue. But this board does have, it seems like, a little more of an option because there's a use permit associated with this that we can attach the conditions to. Is that correct?
That's exactly right. So in most instances, we are, the county is unable to condition a PCN. Those go to the ABC, and they are responsible for issuing those liquor licenses and ultimately conditioning those liquor licenses. So we really don't have condition authority. In this case, the applicant has willingly agreed to accept conditions from the Sheriff's Department based on the, you know, sale of singles, reducing the hours that alcohol could be sold on the property, as well some other security provisions like cameras and lighting, et cetera. So in this case, we were able to add those use permit, or those conditions to the use permit, which is an opportunity that we don't always have when considering these PCNs.
And I think that's great. I mean, I think, I like that, that we're able to do that, notwithstanding, you know, ABC's determination. Would the Sheriff's Department have recommended denial of the PCN if we were not able to impose those conditions?
So the Sheriff's Department, when they provide their comment letters to us, they note that they would not be supportive of such a PCN unless, but that they could take back any of their concerns related to the PCN request if conditions are imposed. And so in this case, we were able to impose those conditions.
Okay. Well, thank you. Yeah, it just makes, reminds me of a conversation we had a couple of years ago, or a couple of weeks, a couple of years ago, a couple of weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Serna.
First of all, terrific staff report. And I also want to extend my thanks to Ms. Kinderman, who's sitting behind you right there. She and the architect for this project participated with my chief and I on a Zoom last week to get a better thorough understanding of the proposal. And at the risk of stealing any of the chair's upcoming thunder here, I just want to really emphasize how I think important this project is, even though some might just say it's a bit mundane. It's a convenience store. It's a, you know, it's a gas station. But the fact that there are going to be chargers initially, electric vehicle chargers on site, and that the planning for future expansion of the charging infrastructure on site is not an aperitif. It's a, it's a, it's part of, I think, a very innovative plan, one that I certainly have not seen thus far in my tenure on the board, where you have a use that is obviously centered around the sale of petroleum products, but is recognizing the changing market for EVs. One of the, one of the unique, I think, potential opportunities for the site, as you alluded to, the, you know, the operator is looking at the future of EVs and the need for charging infrastructure, so much so that they're willing to consider changing out some of the gas pumps in the future for charging units. And they're actually, if I'm not mistaken, they're providing some of the wiring for that ahead of time. But what I pointed out during our conversation last week is that, taking it, taking to its ultimate conclusion, if, and, you know, maybe decades from now, hopefully not decades from now, but in the future, if all those pumps were to be turned into charging units, there would be no need for the tanks either. And so with no use for the tanks, they could be determined to be, I think the term was inert, and just left alone. But that, what that does is open up the rest of the site for even more potential EV charging units that could be maybe used against the, I guess it would be the south-facing wall of the car wash. So I think that is something I heard from the architect during that conversation. I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I think there was some interest expressed about that. So again, I just want to congratulate the project proponent for being very, very thoughtful about this. And again, terrific staff report. Covered a lot of interesting aspects of this project. And apologies to the chair if I did take some of your thunder. Thank you.
No problem. Supervisor Hugh.
Yeah, I just want to pick up on what Supervisor Serna was just talking about there. As far as the, I think conscientious sighting of the overall, where the buildings were placed and pulling the convenience store back out to the, to the street edge, and the car wash equipment being on the interior part of the parcel to reduce the noise impact. So I think there were a lot of things that were taken into consideration about how to make this the best-fitting project for the neighborhood in addition to a lot of the forward-thinking things that were just mentioned. So I thank the team for doing that.
Thank you. I see no others. Would the project applicant like to make a statement at this time?
And Chairperson Kennedy, I would need to administer the oath.
Please do.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses. I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give to this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and the statement I have been sworn.
My name is Melvin Higginbotham. I am the architect on the project, and I have been sworn. I want to thank you for the privilege we have of presenting this project to you. I want to introduce Diane Kinderman, our land use counsel for the project, and Sandeep Donda, the owner of the project. We are very grateful for the opportunity to present the project, and we are very proud of it. I wish I could say that from day one, our vision was exactly what's been presented to you, but, you know, that's not the case. We've gone through a long journey working with planning staff. And they and we have worked diligently to address concerns that have come up over the years. Even going through CPAC and going through the DRAC and then the Planning Commission, we have learned a lot about this site and the impact on the community and the benefits it can have to the community behind it, as well as the people traveling through the area. And all of the input that we have received and the guidance from planning and from CPAC and from DRAC and from the Planning Commission have worked together to bring us to the project that you have before you. So the process in this case has benefited this project, I think, for all concerned. And I don't know, we don't have the, like, the color perspective rendering or the site with the neighborhood, do we? Well, you have it in your packet. So you can refer to the packet, and I'll use my imagination here. So the, I want to point out that, you know, the site has been vacant for, I think, since the 90s. It was originally a gas station. It's been vacant since then. And we think that this development will be a huge improvement on that corner and everyone affected by that corner. We want to point out that through the course of the project, we, thanks to DOT and the work that we've done with DOT, all of the street frontages on both sides will be, thank you, will be improved. The walks currently do not seem to be accessible, but they will become accessible. New curb and gutter, and thank you for that, along the street frontage. And you can see, so if you can back out a little bit like you are, the corner, so there'll be an extension of the bus lane on Stockton Boulevard as part of our, part of our site development. The curb ramps that access both crosswalks on our corner will be upgraded to accessible curb ramps as well as accessible crosswalks. The crosswalks across the street and also the curb ramps on the other side of the street are all being upgraded as part of this project, thanks to the guidance and requirements of DOT. Those will all be upgraded to accessible, to accessibility standards. The large trees that you see in the back are existing tree, most of those are existing trees. We are making every effort, we've even, even in discussions with planning about how we can meander our curbs along the tree line to accommodate those trees. So we can make every effort to keep those large existing trees. We've made those efforts, and at this point, we think we can preserve all of those large existing trees in the back. The, I would say, the building facing on the corner was a, was a good result of all this back and forth we've had, where we now have a pedestrian-friendly market, basically, with doors facing the sidewalk that people can access. As I, as I have mentioned many times, the, there must be at least a half-mile square of single-family and apartment residential behind this project. And all of those people in that entire neighborhood can access our market on foot or by bicycle without having to cross a major intersection. And when this realization, when we came to this realization, we, we agreed to increase the size of the market by 500 square feet. So we're now at 3,500 square-foot building. The question was asked, is that 500 square feet directly correlate to the amount of healthy foods we're offering? The intent of the 500 square feet did not directly impact that, but the reality is that we're going to do at least a minimum 15% healthy food square footage, and that would be a little bit more than 500 square feet. We're going to do that as a minimum. But we, we have every intention of doing outreach to the neighborhood behind us to let them know about the healthy food offerings that we have. We're hopeful that they'll come and get their, you know, their milk and bread and butter and things like that that maybe they ran out of. And before they go to Costco, they could come here and pick that up. We want to offer that to them. We'll also have an outreach program letting them know about the electric vehicle charging. Which brings me to the point that we think this is one of the, this will be one of the first entitled projects of its kind in the state of California. I don't know that for a fact. Might be biased, but we think it's one of the first that will actually be entitled, that has the infrastructure in place to replace all fuel pumps with electric vehicle charging without the need to tear up the site. That, we're very proud of that fact. The initial project will have one level-two charger. It will have two level-three chargers with the ability to add two more level-three chargers without the need to upgrade our transformer and switchgear. We have a preliminary one-line diagram that shows we have the room to accommodate the equipment and the infrastructure to accommodate those five EV charging stations without the need to make upgrades. Then our ultimate vision for all of the fuel pumps being upgraded to electric vehicle charging. We will, of course, need to work with SMUD, and we'll need to work with them on either a transformer upgrade or add a transformer. But, but we have preliminarily looked at that, and we're confident we can accommodate what they need us to accommodate. If they can provide the power, we can make it happen. And, and we will have our conduit in place so that systematically we can begin to remove a, because the fuel lines will come from the north, and the electrical lines will come from the south. To, to, they don't have to cross each other to get to these destinations. So we can systematically remove a fossil fuel pump and replace it with a electric, with a two-station electric vehicle charging. So that ultimately, we would have 15 electric vehicle charging stations on this site. And as Supervisor Serna has mentioned, once we do that, the fuel tanks, you know, we could go through processes that have been established to render them inert, and we would no longer need to accommodate a large fuel truck pulling through there. So there, that might open up an opportunity to add a few more electric vehicle charging stations along the car wash. And in which, you know, with foresight, we will probably include that in our, the, at least some conduit to that, to that landscape area to accommodate those charging stations as well. So again, we're grateful for the opportunity. We're grateful for your consideration of the project. And we're very proud of it, and we're very excited about it, if you can't, if you can't tell.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate it.
Do you have any questions for me?
I see none.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the board on this item at this time? You'll have to be sworn. Okay. What? They don't have to be sworn? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that the applicant was done. Go ahead. Keep in mind, you've heard all these comments, right?
Thank you, Supervisor. Please raise your, I'm sorry. Please raise your right hand. And the appropriate responses, I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give to this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisors, Chair, and everyone. Appreciate your time this morning. I just want to state two things. First of all, we want to thank staff. I believe Melvin did that well. I just want to thank staff for working with us closely on this project. Appreciate everyone's input. And thank you Supervisor Serna for your recommendation about removal of the fuel tanks. Great idea. We can add in the future additional charging stations so the community will have a great market. A car wash, which we'll still need car washes, and then the EV charging stations. I did just want to talk another minute about the market. We did increase the size, as you're aware. The majority of that was for purposes of providing more food, more healthy food. The market will comply with the Sacramento County Health Initiative to have at least 15% of the food be healthy food and a chunk of it up front instead of hidden in the back. And so the goal really is to make it a, more of a robust market for the community, which, as Melvin stated, that it can be accessed via bicycle or pedestrian use if they choose to reach the market in that way. The other thing I want to mention about the market and the alcohol sales, it's only beer and wine. So the PCN is only for beer and wine. We've talked about your ability to condition, the condition of approval with the sheriff's conditions. We've agreed to those, even if those conditions didn't exist. The applicant here and the operator has operated other similar markets in Northern California, and they have had no crime incidents, and they have other techniques that they use in terms of employee training to ensure that there is no sales of alcohol to minors, to ensure that they look for potential criminal issues should they arise and know how to handle them properly. They have, will have the high-end video surveillance system, which can be, video can be quickly downloaded and provided to the sheriff's office if need be. But the good news is that the other locations- But the good news is that the other locations, two other locations they operate, they have no criminal incidents because the projects are designed with SEPTED principles in the first place, and they have their own monitoring measures. So once again, the PCN is only for beer and wine, and we have provided for you a letter of support on April 17th. It outlines, and it enhanced the original justification statement that was provided about a year or so ago on this. We updated the justification statement to confirm that, in fact, this is related to a crime issue, the need for the PCN, and not because of overconcentration. And it identifies how we have provided the public convenience and necessity and addressed any issues. The only issues raised were by the sheriff's department. And so with that, those are my only comments, unless you have questions.
See none.
Thank you again for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I believe there is a member of the public would like to address the board on this item. Please come forward. You have two minutes.
It got shorter. Oh, thank you. Good morning, Board. I have a question. So electric vehicles is our goal, a one-size-fits-all transportation mode. My question is, is anyone in our government, public, or private considering other transportation options than electric vehicles in the future? My Shell station on the corner of Greenback and Auburn just recently put in a hydrogen filling capacity station for hydrogen vehicles, and I was just wondering if, is it possible that we have a one-size-fits-all, or is it possible that we have variety in our transportation choices going forward? And I'm excited about hydrogen. My son did his master's degree at UC Davis, looking at all the different types of fuels and the input and the output and how clean everyone was. And electric and hydrogen were right there next to each other. So my question is, if there's only one-size-fits-all, how come we're not considering hydrogen in our discussion? And I don't know if you need to address that today, but I would like to open our minds up to the fact that there are other members in this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'll just briefly say, if you follow the Air Quality Management District, in which we all sit on, you would know that we are considering all technologies, and hydrogen is certainly a part of the mix. So thank you very much.
And in addition to that, Mr. Chair, also our sewer district.
Right. Thank you. Okay. And I see no more members of the public. Bring it back to the board. Normally, so much has been said, I would just move the item, but I believe since I do have some neighbors that, you know, voiced some concern, that I wanted to go on record with my reasons for supporting this project. First of all, Supervisor Desmond, if, not only would the sheriff not support it without the conditions on the PCN, but I wouldn't support it without the conditions. But due to the conditions and our ability to do so, I do not have a problem with it. I have worked on this project, this small project, as much as I've worked on subdivisions. And I want to thank Brian Holloway specifically, who brought this to me originally, and we've talked hours on this project. I would not be supporting this project as it was initially introduced. I think the changes that have been made make it an addition, a positive addition to the community, bringing the building up, moving the car wash, all of that came later. And then, of course, the addition, as we've spoken ad nauseam about the electric vehicle charging in an environmental justice community, I think is something that is novel and something that I think will be a model for not only this county, but other counties throughout Sacramento, I mean, California. The enhanced landscaping, the masonry wall, all of, and the healthy foods, all of which came later through conversations. So I think that this turned from a project that I would not support to one that I would champion. So again, Mr. Holloway's not here, but I do want to thank all of his hard work on this project, as well as the development team that is here. And with that, I will move approval. Do we, council, have to take two motions, or can we just move staff recommendation?
You can move staff recommendation.
Thank you. I will move staff recommendation.
Second.
Please vote.
You're not a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Item number 50 is county executive comments.
Thank you, Alma. Supervisors, I just wanted to take a moment to showcase a video and highlighting the remarkable effort of our county public health nurses as they prepare for the likely event of a disaster. Recently, the Department of Health Services partnered with Sac State School of Nursing to conduct a nurse disaster work, workers' clinical skills refresher class. This training is specifically for public health nurses as part of a four-part series that include disaster readiness, it's a clinical refresher, and training for shelter situations in the event of a disaster. So I thought I'd just take a minute and share this video. Hopefully, we have a video. There it is.
We decided to partner with Cal State Sacramento and School of Nursing to put together a clinical refresher for our nurses at the county, so that they would feel better and more confident when we need to go into a shelter situation. We realize that we are stronger together and want to make sure that we're providing our community with the support that our community deserves. When they move into this situation that's different than their normal workday, that they have that comfort level, and they're able to provide safe and effective care to our residents. So this training's really important so that we are equipped to do that.
So we were really lucky. A large number of volunteers from Sacramento County were willing to help out, and they've been able to not just donate their time, but donate their expertise, because they're going to be facilitating these stations and teaching their coworkers. And we went through a little bit of didactic information as far as taking care of non-obvious emergencies in shelter situations. But we're also going to be practicing some hands-on skills, basic patient assessments, mobility, how to use some of the equipment, and then how to use some of the first aid equipment that's going to be available to these nurses.
It's been nice for how receptive the nurses are, and they're excited to learn and refresh.
Something I, even before this, really wanted to learn was wound care, so I'm really glad that we got to learn.
I think it's very important because as public health nurses, we may have to respond to a disaster and be responsible for the shelters, and we need to make sure that our skills as nurses are up to date.
It's really important to have these trainings so that when a disaster does happen, we're not trying to scramble and try to learn everything, and that we're as prepared as possible.
Yeah, I think this is very important for the community. An individual nurse who are in a hospital is responsible for a patient, but a public health nurse is responsible for the community.
It's just nice that everyone's coming together, we realize how important this is.
Great. Thank you, Board. I just wanted to also extend my thank you to LeAnn Stevenson, DHS Director of Nursing, and her team for everything they do for Sacramento County. So thank you, Board, and...
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Appreciate it. Supervisor Desmond.
Not on this. Supervisor comments? Sorry. I just want to real quickly thank staff, Eric and Dave, and everybody from Business Licensing, including the Sheriff's Department. We had, we've had several discussions about massage parlors in unincorporated Sacramento County, and I think it's something like 140 are licensed in the county, and 106 of them are in District 3. It's not a distinction that, you know, the constituents of District 3 are proud of. And, you know, obviously, not all of these are issues, but a lot of them are. And recently, I know Business Licensing and the Sheriff's Department did an operation, I think, on 11 of them, combined administrative and enforcement operation, and I think seven of the 11 were found to have been engaging in illicit or inappropriate sexual activity. And so just really appreciate that extra attention. I think you're going to be bringing back some suggestions for maybe strengthening our ordinance to limit maybe the proximity of some of these massage parlors, and increasing kind of enforcement, make sure they're doing things the right way. And it's not lost on me how it dovetails into our discussion about getting more businesses, more investment, more housing into some of these older, unincorporated areas, especially the commercial corridors that have been, you know, neglected and forgotten about. So I think that will only help elevate these communities and bring in, you know, better businesses for folks who live there. So just wanted to pass along that thanks, and just highlight some of your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Anybody else? All right. We do have one closed session item. We're adjourned.